All right, we're calling this meeting to order at six thirty-two. This meeting of the Champagne County Board Committee of the Whole. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Laxton?
Here.
McGuire?
Here.
Michaels?
Here.
Pasalaqua?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Rodriguez? Store? Straub? Summers? Taylor?
Here.
Thorson? Van Hinch Theronot?
Here.
Williams? Wilkin?
Here.
Carter? Covert?
Present.
Esri?
Here.
Portado?
Here.
Goss?
Here.
Harper?
Here.
King? Patterson?
Here. Could I have a motion for the approval of the agenda and addenda? Moved by Mr. Goss, seconded by Ms. Michaels. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to pull the treasurer stuff be two and three. So, they're still working on the credit card policy, trying to make sure everybody's on the same page, so there's no point in us discussing it until they have that hammered out. And the potential staffing issue, she's gonna run through the staffing steps. So I also don't think there's any point in that, so let's just take it off. Okay?
I'm good with that.
So, voting on the agenda as amended? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next to the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of a motion. Ms. Laxton?
So moved.
Ms. Van Hinch Theronot? Is there any discussion of the minutes? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next is public participation. Emily and Ryan?
Okay, um, okay, hi guys. So, we're with AmeriCorps and CCC. I'm Emily, this is Ryan. We were told just a couple of hours ago, the hours ago, that we would be doing this, so if we fumble over our words, please bear with us. So, basically, just a little bit about AmeriCorps and CCC. We are a federal team-based service program for young adults. So basically, we serve with nonprofit organizations, government entities. And we have been serving with Champagne County in our time here. We've been here for about five weeks. We've been doing different projects based around like environmental stewardship, urban and rural development, just different things like that. So I'll let Ryan kind of go into what exactly we've been doing since we've been here.
So, sort of uniquely, we have three different sponsors for this project, which is pretty unusual for AmeriCorps and CCC projects. So our first and primary sponsor is Champagne County Planning and Zoning. We've been spending the majority of our time with them. And most of that has been working towards tire collection that we did in early August. I wasn't present for the tire collection, but Emily can say a few words about how that went down.
Yeah, we just basically canvassed in different communities around, or not communities, but different neighborhoods around Urbana and handed out flyers about just like the tire collection that we were doing, and then also like electronics recycling as well. They could like turn in TVs. So for the tire recycle, people just like pulled up with tractors and trailers and all kinds of different automobiles filled with, or filled with tires, and we loaded them up into a trailer. We got like two whole, like, like big trailers full of tires that eventually will be recycled. So it's just a little bit of cleanup, which is awesome.
So, aside from planning and zoning, we've been working with Urbana Public Works. We spent a week with them, and we were mostly dealing with trees around the city, whether it was pruning them or mulching, just working with, with all the people from Public Works going around in their trucks and just taking care of the trees all around the city. And lastly, for the last two days, we've been working with Champagne County Forest Preserve, and we're working on removing invasive species. And just getting, clearing out this prairie that has a bunch of unwanted shrubbery, I suppose, all over, so we've been taking care of that for the last few days. And we'll be dealing with that for the rest of the time that we're here. And I think that's all we have for you, so thank you very much.
I'm sorry, do we ask like if anyone has like questions or anything like that? Okay, okay, cool. Thanks.
All right, thanks a lot, thanks for your work. Brianna Harrison?
Hello, my name is Brianna Harrison. I am the Secretary of ASME. I am also a senior legal clerk at the Circuit Clerk Office. I am here on behalf of ASME as well as all of our members. We are bargaining for a fair contract with the county right now, and we are fighting for equity and insurance premium payments for all ASME-represented employees. Currently, the county is singling out twelve highway employees to pay a higher insurance premium than the rest of our units. These highway employees endure dangerous working conditions, speeding cars, extreme weather, threats and harassment from passersby to build and repair county highway roads and bridges. Insurance costs change every year and are unpredictable. Champagne County shouldn't be asking these employees to agree to an economic package that could be a potential pay cut. I am here on behalf of all of our ASME members, and I'm asking for your guys' support. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda McDonald?
I am also, ooh, I apologize. I also have gathered a hundred and fifty, more than a hundred and fifty signatures of people from the public in which I have copies of and will leave over here so you guys can take a look at. These are all members of our community, people that are working in the county that have signed this petition in order for these twelve people to get that insurance cap along with everybody else.
All right, thank you. Next I have Linda McDonald.
Hello. I, I came tonight because I had--
Could you speak directly into it?
I came tonight because I filled out an application to be on the Sangma Valley Public Water District Board. And I've not been appointed, so I just wanted to have an opportunity to speak to those who I never have gotten to speak to and say I'm very interested. I'm just retired, I have a lot of time, I have a lot of interests. I've lived there for almost thirty years in Mohammed, and so does my daughter and grandchildren and in-laws and lots of people. Ran for the school district years ago. I have an interest in the community, and I just want people to know before someone else is appointed. I mean, I intend to run when the time comes because I truly am interested in it. So, that was it. I don't know the procedures, I just thought I would say what I wanted to say. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to participate? All right, seeing, seeing no one else, next, next on the agenda is communications. Are there any board members that have communications? All right, seeing none, moving on to Justice and Social Services. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. Monthly reports for probation and court services, public defender, animal control, and the emergency management agency have been put on our, each department's page. We have item B, the Rosecrans Reentry Financial Report from May twenty twenty-two. There is no other business. I do not have a chair's report, and we do not have any items to be put on the consent agenda.
All right, next on the agenda is policy personnel appointments. Ms. Store?
Thank you, Chair Patterson. I'd like to make, I'd like an omnibus motion for appointments one A through R. Resolution, Mr. Ammon, Aaron Esri?
You could go ahead, but I was gonna ask to at least stop it at the end of the drainage districts.
Okay.
And then--
A through R?
Then do the cemetery, the five cemetery--
I mean, A through Q.
Then do the, or you could do all the cemetery, the, I think it's six. Six cemetery together, and then do the Salmon Valley separate.
Oh, okay. All right. So you wanna do A through K and then L through Q? Is that your intention?
Correct.
Okay, we can do that. Without objection, appointments and reappointments. Resolution appointing Kenneth Ducker to South Fork Drainage District Term nine-one-twenty-two through eight-thirty-one-twenty-five. Appointment of Dennis Butler to Pissodum Slough Drainage District Term nine, nine-one-twenty-twenty-two through eight-thirty-one-twenty-twenty-five. Resolution appointing Dennis Riggs to the Risk Drainage District, same term, nine-one-twenty-twenty-two through eight-thirty-one-twenty-twenty-five. Resolution appointing Steve Steerwalt to the Oakaw Drainage District Term nine-one-twenty-twenty-two through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Resolution appointing, these are all for the same term. Resolution appointing Dave Menenga to the Long Branch Mutual Drainage District. Resolution appointing William Wilkin to the Triple Fork Drainage District. Resolution appointing Mike Burr to the Prairie Creek Drainage District. Resolution appointing Larry Zahn to Drainage District Number Two, Town of Scott. Resolution appointing Jerry Heinz to the Two Mile Slough Drainage District. Resolution appointing Doug Bloom to Drainage District Number Two, Town of Ogden. And resolution appointing Josh Daley to the St. Joseph Number Three Drainage District, all terms ending eight-thirty-one, oops, okay, oh, A, E through J. Terms September first, twenty twenty-two to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The last with Josh Daley, to a current term ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Ms. Esri?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Who's second? Brad Pasalaqua? Aaron, would you care to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks. Just a quick note on Josh Daley, and the reason his term is different. He's filling out the term, or applying to fill out the term of his father, who passed away unexpectedly. But he's, this is the drainage district that's closest to my house, that my house drains into, you could say, the land around it, and I'm more than happy to have him fill his father's seat, but glad that he's willing to do it, but it's an unfortunate reason, but that's, that's just why his term's different. He's filling out an unfinished term.
Thank you, Ms. Esri. If you would, please pass along our condolences to the family and thank him for stepping in to take over the term of his father. That's very noble. All these folks do an awful lot of work, and I thank them all for their service. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by-- All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Next is resolution appointing Jerry Seekander to Cross Cemetery Association. And uh, resolution appointing Gary Busen, Musson, to the Cross Cemetery Association. Resolution appointing uh Dan Grady to the Cross Cemetery Association. Uh, Douglas, resolution appointing Douglas Bielski to Cross Cemetery Association. Oh, he's a different term. The uh, uh, first three, uh, term ending uh June 30th, 2023. The Bielski appointment ending June 30th, 2024. And lastly, Vicki, ooh, help me with this one there, and Vicki Van Uflin? Anybody? Madam Executive? Anyone? Okay. But uh, Vicki Uthoffen to Cross Cemetery Association, term ending June 30th, 2028. And resolution appointing Barbara Susie to the Clement Cemetery Association, term ending June 30th, 2026. Do we have a motion? Uh, thank you, Leah. Uh, motion, uh, second to the motion, uh, oops, Beth, vanished there or not? Uh, thank you. Any uh, any comments or anyone want to speak to the motion? Again, I thank these people for their service and uh, if there's no other comment, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries unanimously. Last resolution appointing Rebecca Richardson to Sangamon Valley Public Water District, term ending May 31st, 2027. Do I have, uh, thank you, Jenny.
So moved.
And, and uh, Ms. Lorraine Covert, uh, seconds the motion. Do we have uh anyone to speak to the motion? Very well, all in favor, say again? Jim McGuire has indicated that he'd like a roll call. Uh, Diane Michaels seconds. Could you? Megan, could you call the roll, please?
Lacshin?
Yes.
McGuire? Michaels? Pasalacqua? Paul?
No.
Store?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, yes.
Vanish Thirnot?
Yes.
Wilken? Covert? Esri?
No.
Portato? Goss?
No.
Harper?
No.
King, oh, sorry, Patterson.
Yes.
Okay, I get uh seven to eight. Did I get that right? Okay, the motion does not pass. Moving on, uh, there are a number of appointments to uh boards and, and committees at the county's website. As, as always, we have a number of uh unfilled vacancies in, in county departments. The uh, recommendation, moving on to item number two, recommendation to the Finance Committee for approval of the creation of the Senior Systems Administrator position to be assigned to grade range K, effective August 19th, 2022. I believe the IT Systems Department had. Oh, MC, would you care to speak, would you care to uh speak to the uh? Well, I'll tell you what, better, let's have a motion and then we'll have a speak to it. Uh, have you? Uh, Ms. Covert moves and uh second by Ms. Diane Michaels. Uh, MC, would you please speak to the uh proposal here?
Uh, absolutely. So, uh, good evening, board members. There has been some time that has elapsed, uh, since I was last here, but I was here in April, uh, asking for you to uh allow us to go in front of the JEC to um establish pay grade for this position that has been done in addition to uh the job description, of course, being created. Again, this is a position that's gonna be tasked largely with cybersecurity for the county. This position is gonna be 50 to 60% focused on cybersecurity. That is definitely a hole, uh, unfortunately, that we have uh in our department. The remaining 40% is going to be uh this person serving as a subject matter expert uh and being a, as is stated in the title, a Senior Systems Administrator. So they are going to be the uh higher tier technical support so that when our current systems administrators have any issues, they're able to escalate it uh to that person. Again, they're gonna be working on uh cybersecurity special projects, uh, serving as a subject matter expert. The aim is um that this person will be working at least one weekend day. Uh, so right now, county IT covers Monday through Friday, uh, roughly 7:30 AM to 9:00 PM. Uh, so with this, we'll have some uh weekend coverage for our 24/7 units, which I am sure that they would appreciate. I definitely, of course, am here to answer any questions about what's in front of you, but I did wanna touch upon the handout that uh I, I just passed out. Uh, I was asked to give a comparison from the 2019 tech plan. Uh, this was before my time, but the Technology Committee uh recommended some additions to the IT department. Uh, on the left, um, if you're looking at the double sided, uh, the side by side, uh, on the left side is a county IT at the top and county clerk and circuit clerk at the bottom. Uh, the goal was to consolidate IT across the county. Um, when the tech plan was created, um, circuit clerk and county clerk had their own uh technology specialist. So the committee that was working on the tech plan had the aim of consolidating all IT staff across the county. And over on the right shows that consolidation as well as some needed uh additions to the IT department that that committee uh recommended. If you flip over on the other side, I have taken that uh recommended org chart from the tech plan and I have annotated it. Um, the green check marks are positions that are uh currently a part of the department. If there is a red box around the position, that is a position that still does not exist. Um, so right now, there would be the project change manager, the uh applications developer, the database administrator, and at the bottom right, one of the four desktop support positions. So right now, we have three. Um, if you see any boxes in purple, those are positions that currently are still reporting to other uh offices. So one of the four desktop support positions that are in the county currently is with the county clerk. And at the top, the court technologist is a position that is reporting still to the uh circuit clerk. So, um, and then the orange box is the position in front of you today, the Senior Systems Administrator, again, who will have that focus on cybersecurity. And um, that was a position that wasn't, uh, that, that's being added in addition to uh that proposed org chart from the tech plan. Um, so again, I just wanted to provide an update regarding uh how we are advancing i- in regards to what was outlined in the tech plan and um again, answer any other questions there might be.
Other questions for uh the Chief Information Officer? I'd just like to come, remind the uh board that only three years ago, we had a terrible uh problem at the county courthouse where uh there was a thumb drive with a virus that was, somebody found a lucky flash drive and, and brought, brought the whole system down for quite a while, couple of weeks at least. And some things we don't know, but were not recovered. Only reason that some other programs were not jeopardized over to this bill is because they were running on a, on a old computer that was so old it couldn't be infected with a virus. That, that's actually pretty shameful. It's actually pretty, uh, that, 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 uh, and, and now we've moved quite a bit from those antiquated systems to uh more uh robust and uh electronic uh software that's uh, uh, systems and desktop. And I just, the cybersecurity just scares me all the heck, uh, stories that you hear regularly. So I hope that we'll all uh find a way to support this. Jenny?
Okay, this may be before your time too. It was before my time, but hearing about the breach at the courthouse, do we know how much that cost the county um in fixes? Is there a financial number on it?
Uh, not that I am aware of. There was uh countless amounts of man hours. There was put towards remediation. Um, and I do know that we had to procure a couple of different uh solutions to uh remove the, the virus that was uh infecting the systems and that did come at a higher cost than what we had in place previously, but uh obviously what we had in place didn't offer the protection that was needed. So um, there were costs both for getting that uh more advanced security solution and again, the man hours, but uh I, I can't estimate um how much, but it, it was substantial.
Thank you. I, I'd like a, uh, we, we have to recommend this to the Finance Committee, that we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oppose, the same, oppose? Hearing done, uh, we, that, that, uh, this will move on to the Finance Committee in a later part of the meeting. County Clerk's office, uh, Clerk's Report, monthly reports are on file and uh semi-annual report also in our uh packet. I don't have any other business. I don't have a chair's report. Designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda are items Roman numeral eight, A, 1, A through K, uh, through K, separately, L through Q, and item number two. Chair Patterson, that concludes the policy personnel and appointments.
All right, thank you. Uh, next is Finance.
All right, uh, budget amendments and transfers, budget transfer, BU A 2022-7426, fund 1080, general corporate, department 022, county clerk, amount $35,000, reason to pay for election judges and workers that work prior to election day. Do you have a motion? Patterson?
A second.
Sorry, Jen, Lacshin, second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, opposed? Okay, budget amendment, BU A 2022-7437, fund 1080, general corporate, department 023, recorder, increased appropriations, 689, 689,359, increased revenue, 1,4,212, uh, reason, several large transactions coupled with a booming housing market requires additional projected revenue and expenditures to be captured for the remainder of fiscal year 2022. It seems like we do this every couple of months. Do I have a motion? Mr. Goss?
So moved.
Sorry, I saw Mr. Goss and Ms. Michaels second. Sorry, Kyle. Um, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's monthly report is on file, auditor's monthly report is on file, the auditor is here. Um, county clerk, resolution authorizing an acceptance agreement between Champagne County and the Illinois State Board of Elections for fiscal year 2023 Illinois Voter Registration System IVRS grant, which again, is something we do pretty much every year. Mr. Patterson, under the gun, second, uh, Leah, second, sorry. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? County executive, recommendation to the county board for approval of the creation of the Senior Systems Administrator position that we just voted on to be assigned grade k, range K, effective August 19th, 2022. Does anybody, is it cool with folks if I do these together? Am I allowed to do that? All right, and then the money, which would be budget, BU A 2022-815, fund 1080, general corporate, department 028, information technology, increased appropriations, 22,500, increased revenue, zero, to fund the new Senior Systems Administrator position. So what? So moved?
Second.
All right, Ms. Stan?
Pass along.
Brad and Stan. And my apologies to Beth, you were just out of my, you were in my, too far into my peripheral. Sorry, Beth. I missed you every time. Um, discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I've got uh Finance, A1, A2, uh, D1, E1, and 2 on the consent agenda. I don't have any other business or a chair's report.
All right, uh, any other business? Come on, guys, it's only been 30 minutes. Is there anything you want to talk about?
I'm fine with it.
All right, uh, seeing no other business, I call this meeting adjourned.
Kyle, can I just make an announcement here? I wanted to let you know, whoa, normally we have the board uh budget books for you to take home at the county board meeting coming up so we can have them for you to look at before the legislative budget sessions, which will be the end of this month. We will not have the books ready for the meeting, but we should have them a couple days afterward. So potentially, we'd have to get them distributed by somebody picking them up here or, uh, they're pretty big to mail. So just letting you know that, not to, not, they're coming. We just are trying to get it as fast as we can.
And I know you really wanna leave, but I have one comment for the board. Um, I had alluded to this project that I donated the property for. It, it happened and the schedule and the timeline was so tight that it was hard to get anything in. However, they have uh suggested that we could, as a group, uh, provide some perennials and do some landscaping in about three or four weeks. And so I'll reach out to you guys and see if anybody has some time and is interested. But the project is amazing, uh, house looks great, uh, the family's real satisfied. So it'd be a great way for us to, to pitch in a little bit.
Was that Habitat? That's what I thought.
All right, seeing no other business, call this meeting adjourned.